Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to start in about a minute. And if you haven't filled out speakers cards, you can get them over there, please do so, and pass them over to the gentleman on the end, Alex. Good evening. Thank you all for being here. As a city clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Here.
You have a favor.
Here. And Councilmember Rick Walczek, or Vice Mayor Rick Walczek, is on his way on 92. Thank you all for coming to this workshop. We have a lot of information to go through. I see a lot of you are here, and we have a lot of speakers cards. So we will get right at it, and we will have a staff report begin, and that will be from Alex. Am I wrong?
Yes, it will be from Alex. Just a little introduction, you have lots of information in your staff report. It's a little bit longer than normal, but we wanted to provide lots of history so that all of the information could be in one place. We will give you a broad overview of where we've come, how we've got here, and next steps. And then really, just to remind folks that the item for today is the financing of the library. As you know, the council held a retreat on January 13th, I believe, provided some direction in terms of the strategic plan, indicated to staff that the library was a priority, number-one priority in terms of the strategic plan itself, and thus we're bringing this to you now as the next step in terms of trying to meet that goal of building the new library. So I'll have Alex take it from here.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. My name is Alex Kojikian. I'm the deputy city manager here for the city of Half Moon Bay. The item before you this evening is the new Half Moon Bay Library Project Funding Options. All right. So to give a little bit of background for the project, the Half Moon Bay Library was built in 1971. It's approximately 7,850 square feet. It's a city-owned building. It's the only library on the coast side, and it encompasses and covers a service area of 275 square miles. There were two additional libraries back before Prop 13 went into effect, and it got consolidated into this one sole library here in Half Moon Bay. The population served has grown since its opening. It originally was to serve a population of 4,000. It now serves a population of approximately 29,000. The library is operated by the San Mateo County Library JPA. And per the JPA, any capital projects will be split, 50% funded by the county and 50% by the city. So there is that partnership due to the fact that half of the library patrons come from the unincorporated areas in the county. Currently, the building is not meeting current service needs and inadequate for future needs. So why do we need to replace the building? The current facility space deficiencies include: no community program meeting room, not enough space to meet the public's needs for computer access, the aged building does not fully meet the current standards for physical accessibility, it has dated technology infrastructure, has a lack of zone public and quiet meeting spaces, there's no acoustical separation between the different library activity areas, it's pretty open, and then there's limited options for collection displays. So library needs. The vision for the new Half Moon Bay Library reflects a library facility that provides the best in community space, collections, technology, programs, and services to improve the lives of community residents. The program vision for the new library is of a customer-focused service model, highly diverse community resource, and flexibility in operational efficiency. So as part of this presentation, there's city council action to date, but this does not encompass all the action that's being taken by the community members throughout this community and over a span of about 15 years. So the first item is a 2004 Prop 14 grant proposal. This was state grants. The library came in runner-up. They had an update, and they had a grant application. But the library came runner-up, and the funding basically was expended, and there was no further funding for the project. So talks of a new library were rejuvenated in 2013 when the city sales tax measure J was passed, and the council went ahead and appropriated $500,000 towards a new library project. And then the county Board of Supervisors subsequently contributed $500,000 towards the city share for a library update. Then on February 12th, 2014, there was a city council meeting to discuss getting direction on whether or not the city wanted to move forward with the new library project. At that meeting, a council library subcommittee was established, and then there was direction to hire a financial advisor to see how we could fund a new library project. And then a conceptual update, working with Group Four, was also directed. On July 15th, 2014, there was another city council meeting, and this was kind of a six-month update, the conceptual update that was completed by Group Four architects and talked about the financing options that were available to the city council at the time, as well as talking about what the community visioned for a new library with over 2,000 people responding and participating in the library update process. The preferred funding option the city council chose that evening was to go ahead and move forward with a 10-year lease revenue bond, but use a general sales tax measure that was on the November 4th ballot to help pay a portion of that 10-year general fund lease revenue bond. So then, also, there was the item of discussion of whether or not to have a 29,999-square-foot library or a 25,000-square-foot library. The council went back and forth on that, and so that discussion item was pushed or moved to the August 19th meeting. And during that time, the Library JPA sent a letter of support to the city for a 25,000-square-foot building. The city council at that time approved moving forward with a 25,000-square-foot library. The next item in the timeline is the November 4th general election, and with that came the non-passage of Measure O. It lost by 22 votes. So the financing option, or preferred option that the city council wanted to move forward with back in July, it was no longer feasible with the non-passage of the measure. So city staff worked with the council at a council retreat regarding going over a March 2013 strategic plan that was adopted, and reaffirmed that the library was still a top priority for city staff to work towards. So city staff, after that meeting, went ahead and started working with our financial advisor on just funding options. And that was presented, the two funding options that are before you this evening, were presented to the library ad hoc subcommittee of vice mayor Walczek and Mayor Frazer, and they gave direction. And then that brings us to tonight, February 3rd, and that's for the entire council here to go ahead and discuss and direct staff on what they want to do with what is their preferred funding option. So I want to just really quickly touch upon the conceptual update that took place over a six-month period last year and the community outreach portion of it. Like I said before, over 2,000 people participated and gave their feedback. More than 20, there were more than 20 opportunities to give input and opinions on the project. There were community meetings, stakeholder committees, focus groups, and public kiosks. City staff and Group Four and the Library JPA staff went out to the community to really get input. As a result, children's space and programming were the top priority that came with this update. Closest second was the digital lab and people spaces. It was set upon to move forward with a 25,000-square-foot facility, and the estimated cost as part of that update was $22.8 million, and that includes all escalations for 2016 construction. The city share of the project would be $10.78 million. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and pass it to the city's financial advisor, Gary Kitahata, to go ahead and discuss the two financing options.
Welcome, Gary. We're glad to have you back. We saw you last July. You presented a group of options for us. We tried one, now we're back at it here.
Alex, if you can go to slide number one. I just wanted to recap what I talked about on last July, which is, we had a multiple, we had a lot of variables to talk about. We had two different sizes for the library. We had different costs, obviously, for the size. We're looking at multiple financing scenarios, including different terms, different types of debt, and different amounts of city contribution. We're also looking at two different ways of having voter-approved tax revenues to pay for debt service. One temporarily, or having a short-term extension of sales tax, which would be a majority approval, and then a 2/3 approval for a geo-bond, a property tax levy for geo-bonds. So that was back last July. Today, we've got one scenario, the 25,000-square-foot scenario. We've got one assumption about city contribution, which is the $4 million. And the base case is general fund lease revenue bonds. And I'm also going to talk about geo-bonds. These are not mutually exclusive, one or the other scenarios. You've got the ability to do lease revenue bonds now. You could do geo-bonds instead if you decided that path, but you don't have to choose one or the other path and exclude the other. And just as a reminder, the actual sizing of the issue is based on the construction bid that comes in, and you won't know this until next year. So on slide three, to compare debt types, lease revenue bonds and geo-bonds, the basic security structure is what first separates the two. Lease revenue bonds are a general fund obligation. Lease payments or debt service payments have to be appropriated from the general fund. It's not based on having new tax revenues at all, whereas geo-bonds are paid entirely by a new property tax levy. In terms of voter approval, lease revenue bonds do not require voter approval, just a majority vote of the council. You can decide to do this at any time, although you shouldn't until you're ready to issue debt. Whereas with geo-bonds, obviously, it's a longer lead time. You need 2/3 approval before you can issue bonds. And on timing, as I mentioned before, you could issue lease revenue bonds now, a year in advance, but it wouldn't make any sense because you don't know exactly what the target amount is to issue for. So you don't know whether you'll be over or under issuing. Also, the money would be sitting there for a year, so it wouldn't make sense to issue now. The timing would be the same for geo-bonds, except that you need to deal with the approval first. The other thing that I didn't put down here is that for both scenarios, I'm assuming a 30-year term. And I know that before, we looked at shorter terms because we're looking at the possibility of additional sales tax revenue coming in, and we could amortize the debt more quickly. The standard practice in public finance and municipal bonds is to issue long-term debt for long-term capital assets. If you were financing vehicles or rolling stock, it'd be shorter because the average life is shorter. Buildings, new buildings, new real estate, generally, you would issue 30-year debt. This doesn't mean you're stuck with having to have the debt stand out for 30 years. There's something called an optional redemption provision that's common to any municipal bond issue. Generally, that means that for the first eight to 10 years, you could probably do eight, there'd be call protection. The bondholders know that you can't call their debt early. But after the eight-year anniversary, the issuer has the right to call or redeem debt early in any manner that you wish, meaning in total or in part. So if you save money or have additional funds that you want to use to retire some of the debt, you can do that at any time after the eight-year anniversary and in any fashion. So you could call it from the back end, you could do it a little each year. It's your choice. So you have flexibility there. That's why the longer term makes sense, because you can always shorten. But once you go with a shorter term, you're stuck with that shorter term. So the last slide that I have is comparing financial options and comparing numbers. And we're starting with the $10.78 million as the city's share after the county 50% is taken off. And then if you subtract the $4 million city contribution upfront, the net amount to be financed is $6,785. The, and then from this point, the numbers are different for the different types of bond financing. The par value of the bond issue, the amount you're actually borrowing, is much larger for the, or is larger for the lease revenue bonds because you have to borrow a reserve fund that's a year-long. It's a credit feature of lease revenue bonds. And you have to capitalize interest during the construction period. It's a legal requirement. So it also helps in this case because it delays debt service until 2019, which is when you'll retire your judgment obligation bonds. But that makes the bond issue larger and the debt service larger. So the net annual debt service average you can see is larger for the lease revenue bonds. And I'm saying net because I'm counting capitalized interest for the first two years, the reserve fund itself in the last year, and then you have some interest earnings off the reserve fund for every year, although it's not that much. The geo-bonds, net and gross, are the same because there's no reserve fund, and there's no capitalized interest. So there's no difference between net and gross. In terms of the new cost to the citizens of the city, there wouldn't be any additional new cost for the citizens because there's no new tax being talked about here. The cost for geo-bonds is borne by the property tax owners, property owners. So in terms of the new cost for property owners, again, it's zero for lease revenue bonds. It's 16, the estimate that I've got is $16, $16.5 per $100,000 assessed valuation. This is not a parcel tax, so it's not based on just one parcel. It's based on the dollar value of the parcels. So people who own a larger, more expensive property will pay a higher tax. The tax levy is one number, but it's levied on your entire assessed valuation, be you commercial or residential. See, I don't know if you want me to answer your questions on this now or wait till the end?
We can do it at the end.
Okay.
So, moving forward, wanted to discuss the advantages and disadvantages of the geo, of the geo-bond funding, as well as advantages and disadvantages of the general fund lease revenue bond. So I'll first start off with a geo-bond. So the advantages is that it is the lowest-cost form of public financing. The geo-bond debt service is supported entirely by a property tax override. This is a new source of revenue, enabling the general fund and other city funds to finance other capital projects and community needs. The disadvantages are that it requires a 2/3 66% voter approval, at a time when school districts could be, could also be requesting 55% approval for geo-bonds from the same voters. Time, the city would be required to wait for a special election date and time to organize a successful campaign. So the advantages and disadvantages of a general fund lease revenue bond. So the advantages, does not require voter approval, simple, simply a vote of the city council, and it can be structured so that the annual debt service is paid by freed-up general fund monies, approximately $970,000 that'll be freed up by the judgment obligation bonds being retired. And there's less time as well. The disadvantage is that the general fund is a source for the annual debt service payments for the 30-year life of the bond issue. This limits the council's ability to use these funds to pay for other CIP unfunded projects and for other public improvements that are not as likely as a new library to get voter approval. So identifying sources for the $4 million down payment. So we had this discussion back in July with the council. We basically were able to say where we could get the $4 million, but there was no formal action taken by the council at that time to allocate the $4 million. So I'll go and walk us through that. So currently, there is $1 million allocated for the new library project, and that's through Measure A and Measure J funds. There's $3 million in one-time funds that could be allocated to this project, a half-a-million from additional Measure J funds that are coming in. And then there's 2.5 million of unassigned general fund. I'd be remiss not to mention, my finance director probably would get mad at me, that the other reserves are intact. Per the municipal code, 30% contingency reserve would still remain. So I wanted to make you aware of some additional information at this time. First off, we will not know the financing amount until construction bids are received after the construction design phase and construction documents are put out for bid and received back. Maintenance and utility costs for a new building, currently, it's, we're in an ever-changing environment in technology and sustainable measures and greening, so right now, just for a conservative estimate on buildings that are about 25,000 square feet, be about $250,000 a year. But that's give or take. I'm just putting that as the high amount to make sure, you know, it's conservative. Consideration for a future library sinking fund for major maintenance upgrades and refreshes, maybe 10 years down the line. While this has not been a practice here in this city, it would probably be good to really think about. And you could possibly use some of the rental income that you might get from community meeting spaces. Alternative funding sources and fundraising. So the city is partnering with the friends of the library, and with that, they're going to be working on a robust fundraising campaign, hopefully, over the next year. The borrowing amount would decrease based on an aggressive fundraising campaign. Would also want to work with any type of community foundations that might be in the local area. The library project would, will be placed in the CIP budget and funding allocations along with the other projects. And then just a quick update on state legislation. So there was SB 1455 and SCA 7. I brought this to the council's attention back in July, and I have some updates. For SB 1455, this was to go ahead and have kind of similar to Prop 14, that original library bond measure where cities were able to compete for that funding. This bill was vetoed by the governor on September 18th of last year, so that won't be moving forward. And then SCA 7, this is about changing the threshold for geo-bonds from 66% to 55% for voter approval. But this bill has been sitting in committee over the last year with no additional movement going on. So next steps. Depending on what the council decides to move forward with tonight, I'll be going through just kind of the next steps. So with a geo-bond, if the council decided to go with a geo-bond, there would need to be a special election called, and you'd need 2/3 majority, or 2/3 majority of 66% voter approval. The next opportunity to come up right now would be in August of this year. That's about seven months out. If you look at the wayside, if you're going to do a really good effort for a solid campaign to try to get success on that 66%, other nearby agencies have worked two years to achieve a successful passage of their bond measures. Following the special election, there'd be requests for a proposal for construction design. That's about a three-month period. By the time we draft the proposal and then give about eight weeks for firms to respond, then the construction design documents and phases, that would take on all the environmental and do all the documents, that would take up to a year of work just to get that all into motion. That would culminate with an award of a construction contract, but that would take about two months by the time we get everything lined up with that. And then construction beginning, you know, getting all the insurance in line and everything, that would be another month. So the lease revenue bond, the only difference is, and I won't walk you guys all through it, is not having the special election. So that's the time savings that you'd have. On the lowest end, if you're really looking at it, you have 18 months on a lease revenue bond till the time that you could get a shovel in the ground, or 25 months if you were going to do a special election really quickly in August. As part of the construction design phase, I just wanted to mention to the public and to the council that we envision having periodic check-ins with the community when we go through the design document to get input. So as I stated earlier, the council library subcommittee met last Tuesday on January 27th, and they gave direction to staff to present to the council this evening to approve the use of a 30-year general fund lease revenue bond to fund the new library project. And then they also directed to bring to council's attention tonight to formally allocate $3 million towards the city's share of project costs, and then also to bring to council's attention to direct staff to incorporate the new library project into the 2015-16 Capital Improvement Plan in the city budget. This concludes my presentation, but I also want to let you know that we have Gary Kitahata, our financial advisor who's here in the audience, Anne Marie DeSpain, our library director for the JPA. She's here with us tonight. Annie Malley, our library manager. Don works with Group Four, the architects, so if you have any technical questions. And we have Brian Mora, the city's interim finance director as well. So we're all here to answer any questions you might have this evening. This concludes my presentation, and thank you.
Well, thank you, Alex, and thank you, Mr. Kitahara. And for the public, so you just heard 20 minutes of probably a lot of technical financial data. You wanted to talk about the beauty of the library and what was special to you, but the financial data is the key piece for us to really make it work. So it was, thank you for that very good report. Just a couple of housekeeping things. I hear some people have some great cellphone rings, and it's been interesting hearing them. But if you could look at your cellphones and just turn those off for right now, we have a lot of people that want to speak, and we want to be able to hear them well. And also, I know we have our passions. We're all very passionate about a lot of things in our life. Let's just remember to be real respectful to all the speakers and to everyone in the room this evening. And for those few people who have come in in the last 20 minutes or so, if you don't have a spot to sit, someone's got a seat, raise your hand so they'll, they'll know, okay? And also, I have these blue cards here. If you'd like to speak, the blue cards are over in that corner. Just fill out your name and bring it around to our city clerk, Siobhan, give a wave there, and we'll let you be heard. And, go ahead.
May I ask the city manager to translate that last statement in Spanish for our Spanish-speaking friends here?
Now, in discussing this tonight, the real important thing to think about this is not just the city. This is a city, community, and county project. And along those lines, we have two very important people who are here this evening to talk about the county's part in this. We are honored to have both Supervisor Horsley with us this evening, and also Supervisor Carol Groom, who is the chair of the Board of Supervisors, and also the chair of the Library Joint Powers Association. And I'd like to welcome Supervisor Groom and Supervisor Horsley to the podium.
We should come more often for that kind of a, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I just, Don and I just want to say a couple of words. I want to speak first as the chair of the Library JPA. As you know, this library serves county residents as well as Half Moon Bay residents. And so we, the Library JPA is, has 500, has allocated $50 per square foot for your furnishings and equipment funding for the new library. The JPA is very excited about having a new library here. I think some of you have probably been to the bayside and seen the newly renovated libraries in Belmont and San Carlos and Foster City, and just truly how beautiful they are, especially with the children's rooms. I think that, you know, obviously, the best thing that we can do as, as government officials is make sure that our children have the very best. And I think when, in this case, the library is meeting those needs for all of our children and, you know, really the future of what happens in our county. The county is also a few, a full project on this library. We have allocated half a million dollars for Measure A funds to support this project, and the county is going to put $10 million into your construction fund. So that would be half of your construction costs. So we look forward to being a full partner, there you are, we look forward to being a full partner and assist you through this project. So let me just, let me just reiterate that the county Library JPA will contribute $1.25 million for furnishings, and the county of San Mateo will contribute $10.78 million for your construction costs. Don, would you like to say a few words?
Well, thank you, Mayor Frazer, for giving us an opportunity, as well as the council and city staff for giving it, both Carol and I, an opportunity to speak. And I wanted to just tell you that I can say that, well, as a district supervisor for District III, all of my constituents on the coast side are extremely excited about the possibility of a new library. the possibility of a new library. And, you know, we all know that libraries have really reinvented themselves. They're really an important part of the community. They really are dramatically different than, you know, what they used to be 30, 40, 50 years ago. They've really done a fabulous job of being really kind of key parts of educating our children and being really a resource for all of us as well. So I just want, again, thank you, and I'm really oppressed by how all these constituents here to actually, I presume they are all supportive, right? Yeah. This is really a fun project for all of us, so we're really excited about it, and we'll do whatever we can to help you get this project going. So again, congratulations for taking this up this evening, and thanks again for giving us an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. And if you look around, we've got some little friends out there. It looks like they've made some posters for us, too. So thank you for that. Well, we've got a lot of cards here, and you do get a three-minute time, but if you want to just take some time and say you agree with the speaker ahead of you or whatever, that's okay. It does help wrap things up a little bit more, too. So, but you do get your three minutes. So first up, we will have Hope Atmore, who is representing the Friends of the Library, followed by Brian Lee.
Thank you, Mayor Frazier, Vice Mayor Kowalczek, and council members for your time tonight. I don't need to convince you of the need for a new library. You've been inside, you've spoken to patrons and staff, and you know the facility is inadequate. I don't need to convince you that a new library building is the right choice, because all five of you have stated your support either as sitting council members or as candidates. I don't need to convince you that the community supports this project. You are all aware of the thousands of community members who enthusiastically gave input during the needs assessment and the design phases of the conceptual plan. It is also demonstrated by the number of citizens here tonight who made time on a Tuesday when they could be home having dinner with their families. Even during the at-times divisive campaign this past fall, no one suggested that we didn't need a new library. I am here tonight to convince you that this is the time to take action. You, as a council, have before you a critical decision to make tonight. Will the library happen now, or will the library happen maybe sometime later? What I fear is that if later is the choice, then we may lose the support and momentum that we have worked so hard to gain. I am here tonight to remind you that it is your responsibility to prove to the community that you will follow through on your commitment to build a new library. Don't be the council that pushes this off for another couple of years. Don't be the council that presses the buck. Capitalize on our current momentum and move forward with the timeline that has been developed. Your community is tired of waiting. The staff reports analysis makes it clear that the city can take on this project right now and break ground on our new library in the summer of 2016. Between the county's contribution, the JPA, city general funds, and donations generated by the Friends of the Library, the total amount of this bond will be between 4.8 and 6.8 million dollars. In the grand scheme of things, that's not that much for the city to pay off over 30 years or less. Assuming the council moves forward with the general fund lease revenue bond tonight, as a fundraising committee, the Friends of the Library are looking at a 14-to-15-month timeframe to solicit donations. If, however, the council were to push for a GO bond, the language for that bond would need to be written as quickly as possible to even see it show up on next November's ballot. This means that our fundraising is cut short nearly in half. We would fall into a financial holding pattern, and a greater financial burden is ultimately left on the residents of Half Moon Bay. There is absolutely no reason to delay this project by going for a general obligation bond. You already know that the library has the support of the entire coast side community, so represent them and move forward. It is beyond time to take action on this. Let's celebrate a groundbreaking in 2016 and be glad we didn't delay yet again. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Brian Lee, followed by Bridget O'Farrell. And just so we can move this along, if you could hold your applause till the end of public comment, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks. It's always wonderful to go after a really well-prepared speaker. My name is Brian Lee. I'm an El Granada resident, and like a lot of people here, I'm really excited about the possibility of a new library. And I wouldn't say that I'm an expert on the funding options. We have him, the gentleman right here. But I have a concern that Hope brought up, and I think it's very important to know that we have the possibility of the general fund lease revenue bond, that the council can really put your foot down and say, this is what we're going to do. We're going to have a library. And I think that's something that's pretty powerful, that you can say, we're the council that got the library built. And I also share that concern that Hope has, that if we go for a general obligation bond, that what's going to happen? Another partial tax? In my 20 years here on the coast side, I've seen a lot of partial tax taxes come and go and not be passed. It's a very difficult thing, and I really hate to have something be a maybe. I like it to be an absolute. And so I look to the council for leadership, for making the choice that really serves the city, the county, and all the people that would come to this library, and choose the the general fund lease revenue bond, and let's get this library built.
Thank you. Bridget O'Farrell, followed by Patricia Hansen.
Good evening. Thank you, and I'm very pleased to be here and to encourage your support to move quickly on the library. I'm speaking as an author and someone who writes books, as well as articles and columns. Libraries with all of their new technology are central to my life as a writer with many, while my preference is to hold a paper book in my hands. Several of my books are available on Kindle, talks are on YouTube, and Facebook and webpages. And these are critical to disseminating information about books, talks, and lectures. Libraries need good space and new technologies to make writers' work available and much more available to the general public, as well as to do the work to begin with. But much more importantly, good public libraries, like good public schools, are critical to creating and sustaining a literate democracy. In a recent visit to our library, and even though I live in Moss Beach, this is my library, I was impressed with a number of children of different ages and diverse cultures around a row of computers, moms and dads checking out books and videos, and seniors reading newspapers and magazines. The staff and volunteers were knowledgeable, helpful, and friendly. The physical space, however, was sad, cramped, and outdated. Sitting on the edge of Silicon Valley, we can do better. I supported the ballot initiative last fall to help finance this library, but I couldn't vote for it, nor could any of my neighbors. The county has offered to pay half the cost. My husband, TJ Galothier, and I, he joins me in urging the city council to give very high priority to funding and moving forward now. And based on the presentation I just heard this evening, I understand much better than I did before that we can actually move forward now, and I would encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Hansen, followed by David Eblovy. And Patricia's not here. David Eblovy, followed by Alan Alafano.
Did someone forget notes? I'll be very brief, given the scope of the meeting here tonight. From the July meeting, I have a question for Mr. Kitahara, and I know he can't answer questions, so hopefully someone else will follow up on this. This is the recommendation from the city council's packet from Kitahara and Associates. The recommendation, primary recommendation, is general obligation bonds. This is the lowest cost of any municipal debt, but also all debt services covered by new property tax revenue and not by the city's general fund. Tonight's recommendation is a general fund lease bond. So realistically, and those were both made in exception of Measure O. Measure O is not what changed, so I'd like to get clarification on what changed between those two. The second thing I'd like to clarify for everyone here is, as Alex has already said, a general obligation election can be held in August. It does not need to hold up anything. There is no requirement that it hold up anything, and we're not talking about chump change. $2.3 million at the minimum is the difference between a general obligation issue and a lease revenue issue. This is tremendously significant. Mr. Kowalczek even believes that, because he wrote in his response to Friends of the Library, that the approved alternative is to utilize a partial tax in combination with savings, my preferred option. Something has obviously changed between July and now. I don't know what course is best. We need to get the library built. We're all in agreement with that. But before we lock in the general fund to $300,000 to $800,000 a year of committed revenue, dedicated committed revenue, we need to ask ourselves, is that permissible? Is it logical? And why have we changed course so dramatically since July? Thank you very much for your time, and good luck.
Thank you. Alan Alafano, followed by Julie Mel.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. It's interesting to be on this side. It's really a great opportunity tonight. I mean, I went to the planning commission meetings for the Boys and Girls Gym across the street, for the skate park, and we had great enthusiasm for those projects. And I think this continues in that same vein. This is, again, for the youth of our community. And don't forget, this will provide so much more opportunity and resources for a lot of segments of our population on the coast that don't have these resources at home. It's very important that we make that effort to provide these things for the people in our community that sometimes don't have these things available to them. There's no doubt, I think we all want the library. I think the big question tonight is, how does the city move forward? Let me make a recommendation to you that's maybe a combination. There's no doubt that the general lease fund bonds are the quickest and most sure way for you all to move this project forward. But at the same time, the downside of that is there may be some higher costs. I understand that. But it also ties up cities' funds that could go for other projects. So let me make this recommendation. Don't delay the project. Use the lease revenue bonds now, which is in your authority to do that. Get the project rolling right now. Once the project's underway, you've got the funding set, then look at other ways to come back and pay off the debt, which could be, and I could be wrong here, but the GO bonds at a later date. Nothing says that can't be done later, I don't think. Number two, when the Cabrillo Highway properties are going to be at some point marketed, there could be millions of dollars coming from that. That could be part of the package you put forth to the community, saying, if you approve this tax measure, when we sell this property and get the proceeds, we will commit to pay off the bonds early and take care of that that tax measure early. And let's, again, as you heard, in 2019, the city picks up over $900,000 of the bonds that we're currently paying out. So there's a lot of options, but my recommendation, as you've heard from other speakers, go with what's sure, get the project up and rolling, it's in your control, and then look to other ways to finance it later. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Mel, followed by Nancy Evans.
Thank you, Mayor Frazier. Good evening, honorable council members. I'm Julie Mel. I live in Monterrey. I address you all not as the co-president of the Friends of the Half Moon Bay Library, but as a citizen and a constituent of San Mateo County. A bond project in 2000 voted in bond money to build a 33,000-square-foot library. In July of 2014, the Half Moon Bay City Council met for a special study session. Alex presented. Group Four displayed their new library project boards. More than 2,000 community members shared their interest in design details for what they would like in a new library. And your council unanimously decided to go ahead and let a portion of Measure O sales tax pay for this library. The room in both 2000 and in 2014 looked much like it does right now. As you know, Measure O did not pass, but neither did the energy to have a new library built. The positive energy was here in 2000, much as it is again today. The community is still giving input, and from what I understand, lots of it. People are still voting for and deservedly requesting a new library. I know I didn't need to give you the history, but it's on my mind. I want to read some words from the letters you've received from the community that were shared with me over the past week. Please let these words sit and let them sink in. We know the library is one of the only places in the entire community that that the entire community can go to learn, study, educate, grow culturally, and socialize for free. The library is a safe haven for everyone, regardless of socioeconomic class, race, or religion. These are some of the words taken from the notes you received. Too small and therefore quite loud. Distracting. Inadequate. More room for student collaboration. An outdated library. Worn and much too small. Too small and outdated to be functional. Wildly outdated. In regards to those comments, I say to you, we are evolving. Let our community evolve with us. The longer we delay this, the more it will cost. As Brian and Hope said, let's make it an absolute. I ask you to please stand together and vote as a general fund lease revenue bond. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Nancy Evans, followed by Paulette Eisen.
Thank you, Mayor Frazier and city council members. My name is Nancy Evans. I live in El Granada. I've lived there for 35 years and raised my children on the coast side, and now my grandchildren, some of my grandchildren, live on the coast. So I've got three generations of my family currently using the Half Moon Bay Library. Over the past 15 years, I've been working towards getting a new library for the coast. I was treasurer of the Friends of the Library for 12 of those years. We have made many, many attempts over the years and had many, many near misses for the funding of this new library. It's just been heartbreaking how close we have come, but right now is the closest we have been ever to getting a new library now. And so I urge you to please not delay any further, but to to fund this new library in the quickest means possible. I also wanted to add that the Friends of the Library Board is, right now, a very talented, young, energetic board that is, has the whole community energized. And the Friends' membership is larger and more involved than it's been for many years. So this, this is the time, right now, to go the quickest means possible to get a new library. 15 years is just too long to wait. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paulette Eisen, followed by Wendy Schaefer.
Good evening. I wondered whether to come here tonight at all, because I assumed that most of the people in the room would, there'd be the ground swell for the new library. And honestly, I haven't been convinced. I understand that, I guess, the council's been convinced, but I personally, as a property owner, have not been convinced that we actually need to replace our library. I love our library. I'm a lover of libraries. I think we have a darling little library that suits the size of this community. 29,000, you throw at a number like 29,000, but what, what portion of that 29,000 actually use the library? So I really need convincing, and I would like to see, frankly, a referendum before we sort of make this big groundswell move. We have to have this new library, it has to be replaced. I'd like to see a referendum and see that every, that people in the town, that the actual majority of people in Half Moon Bay want a new, believe that we need a new library, that they're willing to have the city go into debt in order to get a new library, and that other projects would probably have to suffer because the city would be going into debt for a new library. So I would like to see that people think it's important enough to go this route in order for us to approach this in a sound... order for us to approach this in a sound, conservative, proper way, without getting too swept up in the enthusiasm, which is terrific in this room, for a new library. So I'd like to see more on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Schaefer.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Wendy Schaefer. I live in Half Moon Bay. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of the Friends of the Half Moon Bay Library. I don't think that there's any doubt that this community wants a new library, and there has been many, many, many opportunities, there have been many opportunities for people to say what they want, and I think it's been pretty clear. I would like to say that I support what many of the speakers before me have said in terms of that it's time is now, we need the lease revenue bond, we need a new library. This is one of the most underserved areas in the county, and the library is one of the central places where the community can gather and get various services way beyond books. I would also mention that if we wait, things get more expensive. There's never been any doubt, if you wait two years, if we don't move forward quickly, the costs will go up. Time is money. And also wanted to point out that the costs may be significantly lower than the estimates. We haven't gotten the proposals in, and also with vigorous and enthusiastic fundraising, which I think we will have, we can offset quite a bit of the cost through our fundraising efforts. And so I would encourage and urge you to go with the lease revenue bond and get the new library built now. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Rosen, followed by Laura Wilson. Did I say that right? Margaret Rosen?
No.
Your Lotto number's called. Come on up.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us all to speak before the council and Madam Mayor. My name is Margaret Rosen. Some of you here know me as Peggy Rosen. I'm a volunteer at the library, and what I have to say, I appreciate what you had to say about your taxes. I live in El Granada, but my San Mateo County taxes would help pay for this library, and I know right now it's all about the money. But I want you to think about also, very much, the personal part of this library. We moved here in 1994. I'm from Chicago, so I'm from big libraries and big stuff that you can access. Our daughters, we homeschooled for quite a while here, and I used a lot of the resources at the library. And it's not, if you look at the 1971 and you think of a library in 71, everybody goes "shhh." But the library here is vibrant, and the staff is so engaging. And if you would spend even just one day following a staff member, what I find eye-opening is how many broken crayons they reuse, little scraps of paper that they've cut up just to stretch as much as they possibly can to keep this a viable place for everybody. And again, regarding property taxes, and we know that we live in one of the richest places in the whole of the United States, that library is a level playing field. Anybody can go in there and get research for what they need. Anybody can go in there and borrow a book. And as much as I advocate 101% for children, there are a lot of seniors that go into that library. And with the additional housing at the place south on Main Street, there are a lot more seniors coming in. And because I do volunteer at the library, and we get the special privilege of being in there when it's closed to the general public, the minute that door opens up, people are running in. And that was something I'd never experienced before, to have 30 people waiting to get into the library so they can be the first one on the computer. And these are people who are not kids in school. These are people who are looking for a job, or seniors who don't have access to a computer, who want to talk to their kids around the country, whatever it might be. I can see your eyes glassing over right now. It's about the money. But if you're talking $6 million, and I know these Friends of the Library people, somebody's going to step up to the plate and think of it as, what, three, four, five houses in Half Moon Bay? It's the cost of five houses. You know, really, I mean, it's mind-boggling to me, the house around here goes for 1.5 million. It's a house! You know, it's just a house. Six million for a library, or six million for five houses. And this would, you know, and Ben Franklin started it all for us, and as Americans, we need to do this. Thank you.
Laura Wilson, followed by Apolonia Cortez.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I am Laura Wilson. I'm a volunteer on the board with the Friends of the Library, and I had the chance to meet hundreds of people when we were out getting community input for this, and I was amazed at how many families, like Nancy's, have been going to that library for generations. There are so many grandparents bringing their grandkids now, so many parents that grew up going there, bringing their kids now. And we're at this critical juncture where we can protect that and build a new building that will be there for the current generations we're responsible for, as well as the ones that are to come that we're responsible for. And there are so many programs that are helping the children. It's such a critical resource. We understand that the library supports education, and I wanted to speak to you how important I think it is for adults, too. It's an incredibly competitive economy. I moved here in 2008 and was basically, within a couple of months, caught up in the downsizings of that eye-of-the-storm year of the recession. Finding the library here in town was an incredible resource for me. I now work for MIT, where we talk a lot about 3D printing, changing so many industries. I was so excited that our library already has that. We're giving access to the kids that we're preparing for this economy, to the new technologies now, and that matters to them, it matters to the grown-ups. It's such an important tool, it's such an important asset to the community for individuals, and that makes the community stronger. And there's also the sense of the place of community that we need. We need the space to get together, we need a place for groups to go and to help to plan. It just feels like an incredibly vibrant and exciting time for the community as a whole, and the library will be at the heart of that, and we need this. We need this now. We have to take advantage of the matching funds, and we really hope for unanimous support tonight to move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Apolonia, followed by Alma Aguilar.
Hi, my name is Apolonia Cortez, and I better say this in Spanish, because it's my first language, and I don't want to make a mistake. Somebody translate it for me?
You go ahead, and Magda?
I will try.
Okay, that's better than me. Mi nombre es Apolonia Cortez. Yo soy voluntaria en la biblioteca hace como cinco años ya.
I've been a volunteer in the library for about five years.
Mis niñas y yo estamos ahí todos los sábados ayudamos en el arte.
My daughters and I are there every Saturday, helping with art projects.
Y por nuestra experiencia puedo decirles que si nos surge una biblioteca nueva porque el espacio es muy pequeño, tenemos bastantes personas que vienen a traer a sus niños.
From my experience, I can tell you and urge you to let you know that the space is very limited, and we have lots of people that come, and the space is just not large enough.
A veces, las personas que tienen sus daycares traen a los niños a la biblioteca también y hacen arte junto con nosotros, entonces el espacio es demasiado pequeño y sí urge algo más grande.
The space is incredibly small. Lots of people who have daycares bring their children over to the library and work on art projects with us, and the space, I just urge you to understand that the space is just significantly too small.
Mis niñas también les gusta mucho trabajar. Por ejemplo, tengo una niña en sexto grado y después de clases le gusta ir a terminar sus tareas. Ahorita están utilizando mucho las tabletas en la escuela y ella necesita más tiempo para hacer sus trabajos. Entonces hemos encontrado que no hay suficientes computadoras para que ella pueda terminar su trabajo.
My daughters like to do a lot of work, and they're using the tablets at school, and so they like to do their homework at the library afterwards, and they're finding that there's not enough computers or tablets available at the library for them to do their homework, and they're not have space to do their homework.
Entonces, de la manera más amable les pedimos que no sigan posponiendo el hacer una nueva biblioteca. Por favor, téngalo en mente. La comunidad es demasiado grande y todos necesitamos de ella, y estamos dispuestos a seguir dando nuestro tiempo como voluntarios en lo que más se puede. Gracias.
And in the nicest way possible, I'd like to urge you to please make sure that this library is realized so that you can help the entire community. It's a large community, and we will continue to work for the library and continue to volunteer in whatever way we can. Thank you.
Apolonia, gracias.
Gracias. Good night. My name is Alma Aguilar, and I'm here to represent the Hispanic-Latino community. Been here 15 years. The library was my second house. I came here by not knowing the language. I went there, they helped me. A lot of these people know me. Armando was there, he was like my second father, too. So every time I needed something, they were there for me. I graduated from high school. I'm at college now. I'm a mother, that I'm using the library for my little one, so I want her to have that space to walk in and feel like it is her house. We need that space. We need more upgraded supplies. Every time we come, we have workshops, we have projects. It's too loud. Kids are loud. I'm a preschool teacher. I bring my kids. We are loud. So I feel like it's a lot of people around just doing that "shhh." How can you explain a kid to be quiet when they're coming and they're enjoying books, they're reading, they want to play? So my daughter was making a poster sign, saying, "We need a multipurpose room." What is a multipurpose room? It's a room for kids to come and be part of projects where nobody's going to be interrupted, and they're not going to quieten down. So they have the voice to say, "We need another space for kids. That's going to be our future," and they are going to become to be a better citizen. So I'm talking more like for my daughter, who is not here, but I'm a parent, I'm a teacher, so yes, we do need that space. Thank you.
Gracias, Alma. You were the last card and the most eloquent. Thank you. Bringing it back to council now, we've heard from the public, and as we all know, it comes down to dollars. So let's talk about this. How are we going to make this happen? Questions?
I'd like to just share with you my unfortunate and fortunate opportunities to serve the city. In November of 2007, when we were faced with a 30, close to $40 million judgment, it was pretty low. I thought this was the end of all of us. It was a very difficult time. And then in August of 2009, signing a $20 million bond to go to pay off the judgment, and then all of a sudden, the work and the challenges that we've all faced, when we look at debt, I would have never thought we would have been able to pay down this debt. And as a farmer, debt is kind of a way of life at times, and I'm sure it's a way of life for all of us. But in a municipality, it's about sharing this debt. We do have to make sacrifices. And as I stated earlier, by 2019, the bond that we've been obligated to will be paid down, and as I understand the presentation from our experts, we have an opportunity to pay this debt down sooner than people think we can. It's a challenge. I have some ideas, we all have some ideas. So I'm trying to understand, I think, as it was mentioned earlier, for every day that we delay a project, it's just going to cost more. Expenses go up, as it was mentioned. We know how elections go. There is no guarantee anyone's going to win in life. Ask a number of senators in the United States election this last November and fellow council members throughout the country. There's no guarantee on passing a bond measure. So I really appreciate all the comments from all sides, but I'm not afraid to look at debt. We do have to make some concessions here and there, but the city's doing pretty darn good, and I think our finance director will help us with that this evening also, as we get into our agenda. So I'm really comfortable at this time to continue to move this forward as quickly as possible. Personally, at the moment, and those are my comments at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmembers?
Yes. Yes, this is probably not going to be a popular thing that I'm going to say, but I'm going to say it anyway. I am in favor of the general obligation bond, and my reasoning for that is a financial one. That's one of the reasons for it. Two and a half million, or almost two and a half million dollars is not chicken, whatever you call it. It's a lot of money, and it's a lot of money that we could use for other capital improvement projects. Putting out over $350,000 a year to fund the general, the revenue lease bond is a huge amount out of our budget, for which we could be putting our money elsewhere. If the city is so much in favor of a library, which I believe it is, I believe there's a huge groundswell for this library, if it's been going, if it's been in the conversation for 15 years, adding six months to that and doing a special election to get a two-thirds majority vote is the way I would like to see us go. I cannot imagine, if there is all that support, that we couldn't get a two-thirds majority vote. Additionally, if two-thirds of the population does not want the library, they have the right to be heard. I personally want the library, and I want the library no matter what, but I think waiting six months, having a special election in August, is the way to go. So I'd like to move that we direct staff to bring back an alternative resolution to place a 30-year general obligation bond for the new library on the ballot at a special election in August. I'd also like, this is the second part of the motion, to direct staff to investigate with San Mateo County for a fairer share of the annual costs of operation and maintenance of the library, which currently are $350,000 a year to operate and maintain the library. Seems like a lot of money for our city to have to put out.
A motion has been made right now. And I'll second that motion. It's been seconded, and I think there's still a lot more discussion to have on that, so with respect to the motion maker. And I can give you a little history, having sat with this for 15 years. It hasn't been a continuous, and in fact, Councilmember Riddick can share some of that, too. 15 years ago, I was on the Park and Rec Commission. Councilmember Riddick was a council member back then, and I was on a library task force. The reason why it went back 15 years ago, because there was a California state bond. It was for $900 million. You had three tries within a two-, three-year period. And the city, at that time, watched to see how that bond would work. The next time we entered it, and it came in low. We partnered with the school, and it came in as outstanding. We didn't get the money back then. That was it, and we had no money. So we're in a different situation than we were 15 years ago, because that was going to be primarily paid for the state. We barely had $1 million to contribute to it. In fact, the worry was, our portion would cost $3 million, and how the heck were we going to find $3 million? Again, that was 15 years ago, different times, community very different. You go through, we've kind of kept it alive, looking, San Diego got the money that we didn't get. And some of you may recall through the years, I followed San Diego, along with the county staff, looking to see if they'd use that money. Well, they finally did. It's because they partnered with a school. San Diego didn't have the money, but they built a high school, put a library in the middle of it. Kind of wasn't fair, but that's what they did. Then you come along to 2007, 2008, and we were in the Beechwood situation. And when we lost that at $42 million, renegotiated for $18 million. For me and the Friends of the Library at that time, that was a library. That was a library right there. So we get through a recession, city restructures, things change, we're in a good place now. And two years ago, we reformed the Friends to get a groundswell, and we spent the last year and a half with outreach among the entire coast side. Over 2,500 people responded. So yeah, we started out 15 years ago, but for different situations. So right now, we are in a financial situation that is far different than we were 15 years ago. We've actually saved money, and because we have that Beechwood debt that initially was 30 years, with restructuring, putting money away... thirty years, with restructuring, putting money away, we're paying that debt off twenty years earlier. So when 2019 comes along, we have an additional one point two million dollars. Half of that we could put to the library. Now, it's always mentioned to go longer, a thirty-year debt. Well, I don't wanna spend thirty years paying off a library. When 2019 comes, we could double or triple down our payment, 'cause we've just freed up one point two million dollars. We could pay off that library at the call at eight or ten years. And that's with the supplement of the Friends of the Library, say, and the community raising a million dollars, if not more. So you see, I agree. I don't wanna wait thirty years either, but we could do this in a way where we could pay it off in eight to ten years. Councilmember Riddick?
I'm afraid I'll have to disagree with the lease revenue bond approach. Sure, there's all kinds of scenarios that might come into play. We might pay off debt sooner, we might come into more money, but the fact of the matter is, that's kind of cross-your-fingers budgeting and finance. And as a council member, I have a fiduciary responsibility to the community. I represent more than the Friends of the Library. When I was campaigning in November, I found that there's actually, you know, the, the community is, would like library improvements. They're kind of split on what to do about it and how much to pay for it. So it seems to make sense to me that the, the route of a general obligation bond preceded by, you know, community education. And I think there should be pledges of funds from the community to make it more attractive to the voters of Half Moon Bay, because ultimately, our county taxes are gonna go toward it, our city taxes are going to go toward it, and we're gonna be stuck with the operation and maintenance bill. Currently, it's about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. With a new library, it could be as high as three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, or ten times more than we're paying now. And if you actually look at the library, it really deserves a lot more upkeep than it's getting. It's very unattractive. The doorway always looks dirty to me. So I, I personally believe we need a new and improved library, but I think we have to do it the right way and do it in an accountable and responsible way for the citizens of Half Moon Bay. And the financial consultant actually laid this out in a July memo, and I'm going to repeat it for the record, 'cause I think it's really important for residents to understand. General obligation bond's debt service is paid entirely by a property tax override, requiring voter approval. If a general obligation bond is passed by voters, money from the city's general fund, the capital improvement fund, and other funds can be used for other projects currently unfunded. Now, from the staff report, the current capital improvement project budget shows approximately two-thirds of the listed projects is unfunded. So we are telling our citizens that, you know, we're not gonna pay for their sidewalk upkeep, we're not gonna pay for their heritage tree upkeep. The medians are undone, the place is looking a lot, you know, a little ratty in a lot of areas, I think. You know, it doesn't show a whole lot of pride. And, and yet, we're talking about turning over a good chunk of the pots of money that we could use to meet many other community needs for a single purpose that serves a specific, you know, subset of our community. So this is why Kidaharan Associates recommended the general obligation bond route. It's really, it's the lowest-cost way to go. Somebody else already brought up that the lease revenue bond would cost us two point three, you know, million more dollars. Our general fund revenues last year were fourteen point four million dollars. Our general fund balance was nineteen million dollars. A ten million dollar contribution from a library is more than half of that. So we're a small community with a lot of needs. The community needs a chance to evaluate the trade-offs in funding its capital improvements. Do we want a big fancy new library? Would a smaller library work? What else do we need that we want to fund? So I don't think we've really had that discussion. When you ask people only, gee, would you like a new, brand-new library? Yes. What if you asked them, do you want a brand-new library, or do you want your sidewalks repaired? Then, you know, people start thinking. So I, I personally would like a new library, but I think, you know, the right thing to do is give people, you know, the option to choose preceded by a vigorous community discussion about, you know, all of the trade-offs involved. And again, you know, for revenue bonds, the general fund is the source for the annual debt service payments for the thirty-year life of the bond issue. This limits the council's ability to use these funds to pay for other capital improvements, unfunded projects, and for other public improvements that are not as likely as a new library to get voter approval. Revenue bonds are riskier, interest rates are higher and variable, unlike the general obligation bond. Plus, they entail the need for insurance, underwriter costs, bond issuance fees, and on and on and on. This route will cost the city a few million dollars more than a general obligation bond. So I think we need to come together as a community and, and have a, another conversation. Six months is not a very long time for us to have this conversation, and, and I think we should have it. And I would really request the county to have, to enter into more conversations with us about funding operation and maintenance. And I would ask the Friends of the Library to begin working right now to turn up private pledges for donations to make this as an attractive option as possible for the voters of the city of Half Moon Bay. So this is why I'm joining Deborah in supporting the general obligation route. So I'm not saying no to a new library, but I am saying, let's find a low-cost way to do it. Let's engage the community in making hard choices. I have to do it, I was elected to do it, and I'm, I'm gonna do it tonight, and I know all of you will as well. So with that, I will stop. Thanks.
Well, I'm looking at the comparing financing options that was presented. See, if you go out for a bond, it's an election, and it's a cost put on the property owners of Half Moon Bay. I think the property owners have been, have bonds and parcel taxes for schools, they're, they've got so much of it right now. We're at the most financially best time to do this. And yes, if you take a thirty-year loan, it's a smaller amount. I, I strongly urge that we would double down on that, if not triple, but yet, if for something disastrous did happen, that payment is a lot lower. Remember, one point two million dollars frees up in 2019. It takes a whole year, actually sixteen, eighteen months, to do all the documents before you even begin construction, all the SEQA, all the permitting. You don't wanna stand out there and be wishy-washy when you're talking about raising funds. We'd be in the same space that we've been in for years. Well, they're kinda doing it, yeah, they're kinda doing a library. This council has the ability to say yes right now and can go out and raise funds in earnest, because then people will really know they really are building a library. And it's not for just a small segment of the community. I mean, as you've heard speakers, it's changed their lives, and the libraries that we grew up with, library is completely different now. It is the cornerstone of a community. It is a hub where people have right now. So it's much more than a place to put a book, and it has so many opportunities, especially for our nonprofits. You look at the new libraries that have been built. I mean, in the past ten, twelve years, there's been San Carlos and Belmont and Foster City who have built and redone their libraries. The community rooms are a huge part of it, a place for people to meet. Right now, we've got people meeting in coffee shops and corners all over the coast, trying to find a place to, to meet. We'll have that ability and more, to have speaker series, to have events happen in the evening. That can revitalize downtown. You go there first, you have, go to speakers, or you go out into the community and, and the restaurant. We're able to do this now. Any delay just pushes it further and further. We're kicking the can down the road. Do we wanna be the people who kick the can down the road?
No.
Hey, it does not have to like just be one-sided rallying. This is not good.
Is the Vice Mayor gonna make a comment? Otherwise, I'm, I'm willing to call for a question on this motion.
Vice Mayor?
So I, I'm, to the mayor. So I appreciate your comments, and I think, and the, and the financial analysis, and on a pure, by the numbers, the number is lower to use a general obligation bond. The financial number is lower. But that is just the surface. And just to clear the slate, I respect your opinions, and I wanna call the question, please.
Roll call, please.
I'm not sure what we're doing.
It's, it's the motion. Do you wanna, do you wanna read the motion again, City Clerk?
No, I've got it. Thank you.
Maybe for the audience.
Maybe for the audience, please. Read the, the motion. It was a little while ago.
Good, that gives me a chance to make sure I got it correctly. The motion was by Councilmember Penrose and seconded by Councilmember Riddick to direct staff to come back with a staff report to outline a scenario to have a special election in August 2015 to pursue a general obligation bond.
Does that sound right, Councilmember Penrose?
Yes, it does.
I think there was a second part of that.
Oh, and then also to reproach the county to seek additional funding for ongoing maintenance and operation costs.
Does that sound correct, Councilmember Penrose?
It does.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Penrose?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller?
No.
Councilmember Riddick?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kualcheck?
No.
Mayor Fraser?
So that motion did not pass. Yes, next speaker?
So I'd like to continue. So pure, pure numbers is the lowest-cost option, but it's not, it's not the whole story. I'm sorry some of the children had to leave. I know the time was getting on, but we had a great turnout tonight, and I'm sure there are people here who, this is their first city council meeting. I know some of the kids that it, that is the case. And so I appreciate you coming and the voluminous mail we got. And it was ninety-nine percent in support of the new library. There was a couple comments asking that we be, make sure we're thoughtful about this. And so I spent some time going through the packet and the details, making sure we're being thoughtful about this, and make sure I'm being thoughtful about this. Library is a bad word, 'cause it in no way accurately describes what our library is and what our new library will be. It, it just, it sells it short. On one particular day this, this fall, Saturday, I went to the library. There was a adopt a pet fair, there was a salsa tasting event, I got a flu shot, there was a children's concert. There was, it was like just absurd. Plus, plus people were reading. Go figure. It was just absurd. So it, so library is, is just, we're stuck with this word, but it's, it's, it's not a, it's a library, it's a community, it's more. It's just, it's the hub of our community. And on this particular day, it was a great day, and I also did not get the flu, so it was good. The, a couple things I wanna point out. I don't think hope is a strategy. I think a strategy is a definitive action to achieve a goal. And I want us to take a definitive action to achieve a goal. We did this recently, in the recent past. You may recall, how can you not recall, the city faced financial burden and faced insolvency. And we turned the city around in a, in a pretty big way, to a point where we were able to pay off our long-term debt early, and we have substantial savings. Substantial savings, almost one million dollars per year, starting in 2019. One million dollars per year. That is a wonderful basis to fund a new library. If we use some of those savings, a little bit less than half of those savings, we can fund a new library with no incremental tax cost to the community. So while true, the financial numbers tell the story that, that using a GO bond, the total funded, financed is lower, the financial cost to the community is higher because it creates, it adds an additional tax burden on the city of Half Moon Bay on every parcel. It costs us more. The idea of funding the library with no tax increase is, is just wonderful. We're so fortunate to be in that position. We have input from across the community, from all socioeconomic groups. The enthusiasm is high. I get the, the emotion for it. I respect the opinions to the contrary, but I strongly disagree with them. If we skip six months, six months becomes one year, becomes two years, becomes three years, what is lost? What was lost in the last decade of not having these tools and these resources for our children? My children will not get the benefit of a new library, 'cause my children are, are now approaching college age, and they're not gonna get that benefit. So for the last decade, they had the great resources and the great staff at the library, but it, it just wasn't up to par. In Silicon Valley, I believe we have an obligation, in fact, I believe we have a moral obligation to do our best for our children, all our children. The difference between the two financing options, I believe, is a little over one million dollars. So total cost to the city, a little over one million dollars more, total cost to the residents incrementally is zero. I think there's, so in summary, I have three reasons why I'm gonna support the general fund lease revenue bond to build a new library. One, it allows us to capture some of our good work from the savings, from paying off our long-term debt early. We get that benefit. Our citizens get that benefit. It's your money. You get that benefit in this new facility. Two, zero incremental cost to our community. And three, it's an obligation to give our kids and our citizens this innovation, and I said it in November, I'll say it now, I believe it's this library now. And with that, I would like to make a motion. I move that we direct staff to prepare general fund lease revenue bonds as the primary funding strategy for our new library. I will second it.
There's a motion?
There's a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion within council? Okay.
In spite of our disagreements, disagreements at the diocese today, I'd like to invite the whole council to support this project in the best interests of the community, for unanimity. We know, we believe it's gonna carry, and I think a show of support for this entire community, showing that we're all working together for this community, would be a noble gesture.
And I'll just add one more comment. In the late sixties, there were a group of people who were on the council, and they decided they needed a new library. Do you know where the library was before the one next to Cunha? It was on Main Street. Now picture this room, picture it in half, now cut it in half again. It was about the size of a quarter of this library. That was what the library looked like in the sixties. The people who sat here before us had the vision to build a library that's lasted forty-five years. Now, back then, if you just had a small area like this and you built something like that, that was pretty huge. But that's when you had less, less than seven thousand people on the entire coast. Now we have twenty-seven thousand people forty-five years later. We, not Montero Moss Beach, are the people that are able to make a decision now to move forward, to build a library that will endure for another forty-five years. We've got the funding, we've got the enthusiasm. Let's not be wishy-washy. Councilmember Riddick?
Madam Mayor, could I ask for a restatement of Councilmember Kualcheck's motion before we vote?
I would like to.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I went ad hoc, and I would like to be specific about the motion. So the motion is, so I restate the motion to, I move to direct staff to adopt the attached resolution, directing staff to move forward with the new Half Moon Bay library project to be funded by a thirty-year general fund lease revenue bond, and to allocate an additional three million dollars toward the city's share of the project costs.
Thank you. That's...
I'd like to make a comment. Yeah, part of the motion and my second also, I'd like to ensure the community that, I feel very confident that we are not gonna rob other capital improvement projects. We do have some adequate funding to reallocate, and there's some things out there that are not moving along as quickly as possible. So I think in the future budget planning, we'll be able to look at that and ensure the community, you know, that we're not taking it away.
the community, you know, that we're not taking it away from their specific pet projects. So, I'm a strong supporter in this motion with my second. And just, back to the Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember Penrose?
Yes, I wanted to say that even though my motion did not pass, I am not unhappy with the idea of going ahead and voting for a lease revenue bond. I don't think it's the best way to go, but I hear what everyone in the community has been saying about the fact that they want it to go forward now and as soon as possible. I disagree with some of that, as you heard. But I, I am for passing the resolution tonight.
Thank you for your comments, and I think we can all continue to talk with the county in the future and how we proceed operationally, but that's not part of the motion. We do have a motion in a second. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Penrose?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruddock?
No.
Vice Mayor Palte?
Yes.
Mayor Fraser?
One more chance to all be together on this.
I will say, you know, as we move forward, there are ways I can help out, you know, getting an improved library. I will do so. I am against using lease revenue bonds, which I see, the only benefit is that it's an end run around the voters. It's an end run around the voters. The general obligation bond is cheaper, it's more fiscally responsible, and it's the way to go. And that's why I'm voting no.
All right, and I have to cast my vote, and I'm aye. We're building a library! Now, we're supposed to, thank you. We're supposed to have another meeting, a council meeting this evening, so we're going to break till about 7:50. Thank you. Best meeting ever. Hi there.
Hi.
Want to cry? How's it going? Good, really good. Yeah, really good. Yeah. Carol, can I reintroduce myself? I used to work at...
I'm still on the...
Oh, whoa, I saw your name on the letterhead.
Can't get away.
I know, I know.
Well, you're a wonderful person to be there.
Good to see you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.
You guys are wonderful.
I believe you.
Yeah, awesome.